Going the road, huh? Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. This is the Wolf County Board Planning and Zoning Commission regular meeting of October 7th. I'll call this meeting to order and ask everybody to please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Louis, you want to read us in the pledge?
Yes.
Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge is to reply from the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under him, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'm going to ask everybody, please, to either turn their cell phones all the way down, shut them off, or put them in airplane mode. And I'm going to swear everybody in who wants to speak tonight. Hopefully, you've all signed the sheet for speakers. But please raise your right hands. Anybody who's speaking tonight. I swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help me God, I do. Thank you. One more. May I have a roll call, please?
Louis Navarrette.
Here.
Karen Warwick. Roger Benhausen. Kimberly Mitchell. John Kiefner.
Here.
Chairman Hughes Tippin.
Here.
Our first order of business tonight is to review and pass the minutes, or alter the minutes if necessary, of our public hearings, July 15th. It's the first one. I'd like a motion. Okay. So I have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposing, same sign. Okay, the next meeting is the August 5th meeting. Again, I'd like a motion. I have a motion and a second. All in fig- oh, yeah. Can't even speak. All who agree, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, same sign. All right. And the last one is August 19th. Please, I'd like a motion. I have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, same sign. Okay. We're going to start our zoning cases now. The first zoning case tonight will be 25, well, no, pardon me, be ZC-25-062. And Jesus Presello will present the case for us. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, thank you. Yes, I'll be going over zoning case 25062. The owner of the property is Michael Frame. The applicant is applying for a variance for a West Side yard setback to bring the parcel into compliance. Here we have a zoning map of the property. The property is zoned R5 and is deemed conforming R5 parcel. The parcel is planted as lot 156 in the College View Unit 4 subdivision, and the parcels around the subject property are also zoned R5. Here we have a quick aerial view of the subject property. The property is improved to single-family home and a 23x25 detached garage. In 2024, the property was placed in violation for building a 20x23 addition to the rear of the existing garage without a permit. The property owner submitted an after-the-fact building permit to remove the property violation. As staff reviewed the plot of survey as part of the building permit, it was discovered that the garage did not meet the R5 side yard setbacks of five feet. Per GIS aerials, the garage has existed in its current location since at least 1975. Since an addition was added, the garage needs to be brought into compliance with current date setbacks. With approval of the variance before the zoning department can approve the pending building permit. Here we have a plot of survey showing the homeowner property as well as the garage with the addition built, as you can see behind the existing garage. A few pictures of the property. First, a view looking north at the subject property. The view looking north, closer look at the existing detached garage. The view looking south at the existing property across John Kirkman Lane. The view looking east down John Kirkman Drive. The view looking west down John Kirkman Drive. And now I'm going over the various standards and review criteria. So staff finds that the property owner is due to unique circumstances. The detached garage was constructed in 1975. As mentioned before, the property owner acquired the property in 2004. The property owner acquired the property with the garage already encroaching into setbacks. As mentioned before, also for the pending building permit to be approved, the variance needs to be also approved. Staff also finds the variance will not alter the essential character of the locality. Using GIS aerials, staff observed that several parcels within a subdivision also have accessory structures that encroach into the R5 side yard setback. Now looking at section two. Staff finds that the conditions on which this variance application is based will not be applicable to other R5 zone properties. As mentioned before, the property owner acquired the property with the garage already encroaching into the side yard setback. Since an addition was constructed to the garage, a variance is not required to bring the garage into compliance. Staff also finds that granting the variance will not endanger the public or increase the danger of fire. The applicant is seeking zoning relief to allow the zoning department to approve the pending building permit. The building permit will not be issued until approvals is given from all applicable departments and agencies. And with that said, staff is recommending approval of the variance. Of all the issues notified, there were no objections or comments, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
I have no questions. Is anyone any questions? Thank you very much, Jesus. Are there any objectors or concerned citizens to this case here tonight? There are not. Mr. Frame, are you here? Would you, there is no objectors or concerned citizens. Do you have a recommendation of approval? You're welcome to come up and speak if you want to, otherwise, we'll just take a vote. Okay, thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, by motion?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, concern ZC-25-062 be 25-097, giving staff recommendation of approval and no objection. Present at the meeting, approval of variance for West Side yard setback from five feet to 3.4 feet.
I have a motion and a second. May I have a roll call, please?
Kimberly Mitchell. John Kiefner.
Yes.
Louis Navarrette.
Yeah.
Karen Warwick. Chairman Hughes Tippin.
Yes. You've passed, sir. Our next case tonight is ZC-25-095. Takes place in Manhattan Township. And Jesus Presello will be presenting this case also.
Correct, Mr. Chairman, I think that's Wilton Township.
It's a Wilton Township, pardon me. Manhattan, Illinois, Wilton Township.
Not to give a matter.
Yes, it does matter. I don't want to miss, I don't want to misspeak.
Okay. So yes, I'll be going now over zoning case 25095. The owner of the property is Cassandra Van Tassel and Todd Kazlowski. The applicant is applying for a variance for lot furnished to divide the property. Okay. Here we have a zoning map of the property. As mentioned before, the property owner wants to divide the property to create two different parcels. The red outline is a proposed parcel, and the blue line is the remainder of the parcel. The property is zoned A1. The entire property as of today is 40 acres in size with 812 feet of lot furnished along Arsenal Road. To the northwest and south, the properties are zoned A1, and to the northeast, there are some R1 zone properties. Here we have an aerial view of the subject property. The property is improved to single-family home and three large barns. Per GIS aerials, the majority of parcel continues to be farmed. The property intends to create two parcels, to keep one parcel to live in and sell one parcel. The parcel outlined in red would be 27 acres in size with 200.11 feet of lot frontage. The parcel will be created, the parcel created will be deficient in lot frontage for the A1 zoning district. The applicant is requesting the variance for lot frontage to allow the newly created parcel to become a conforming A1 parcel. Here we have a plot of survey of the property showing the property divisions as well as existing home and three large barns on the parcel. We have a few pictures of property. First, a view looking north at the subject property that is set to be divided. We have view looking at the northwestern portion of the property. Looking at the northeastern portion of the property. We have a view looking south at the adjacent property. This is across Arsenal Road. If you look in eastbound Arsenal Road. And finally, the view looking west down Arsenal Road. Now looking at the various standards, review criteria. Staff finds that the property owner is not due to unique circumstances. Existing property has enough furniture to be divided to meet the A1 lot furniture requirements. It is a property owner's desire to divide the property that results in need for the variance, and a personal desire cannot be considered a unique circumstance. Staff also finds the variance will not alter the essential character of the locality. In the surrounding area, there are several A1 properties that are also deficient for the minimum lot furniture requirements. Staff also finds the particular physical surroundings may result in a hardship. The property does contain a pond that if the parcels were created meeting the A1 zoning district requirements of 300 feet, the pond would be split in half and be divided among the two properties. Staff also finds the variance will not impair an adequate supply of air or increase the danger of fire. Any new structures on the property that will be created will be required to obtain a building permit and will be required to meet the A1 zoning district setbacks. With that said, staff is recommending denial of the variance for lot frontage. So Wilton Township didn't send comments after the staff report was published that should be sent out as a memo. They were basically concerned with the newly created parcel being sort of a flag lot, and they were also kind of concerned with the primary parcel not being able to have enough space to continue to farm the property as well as to have certain livestock on the property. But there were no other comments, so I'm happy to answer any additional questions.
I presume you advise the owners of the property that we are against flag lots and we don't like to see new property split up unless they have the everything in compliance.
Right. And yet, that was kind of the reason for the variance. As mentioned before, there is kind of a pond in the middle of the property. So the property itself as of today has about 800 feet of lot frontage. So it does have enough to meet the minimum requirements where we would split in half equally, but there is that pond. So if it was created 300 feet and 300 feet, basically, that pond would be split up, so it would be divided between the two properties.
Or more appropriately, they could do 500, 300.
Right.
Is there anything in the county code that prohibits them from sharing a pond?
There is not, I don't think. Yeah.
Heard of people sharing ponds before. I know sometimes it don't go well.
Right.
You have different things in mind with ponds. So this, are you done, Mr.?
Yeah, sure.
Because, okay, so this one gets me in uncharted territory. I think this is the first time I've seen a staff report specifically state that the splitting of this property is solely for the purpose of making more money. And that's one of the criteria that we have to vote on. So it's always been one I've always looked at, just but always says is not based on, not based, not based. So I guess I almost need to consult with legal advice here. I mean, this, this is a major criteria. If they're doing this specifically to make money, it doesn't really fall into something that we could seriously consider an amendment of the zoning, correct?
That's what the staff report reflects, and that's why the recommendation is what it is. It's one of the reasons.
That pretty much is the main reason for his recommendation. Because it's not, if I understand this right, they could have sold that property non-deficient, and nothing the county would have even known or been able to do to stop it, correct?
Right. If it were created, as mentioned before, meeting all the requirements, there would be no reason for the variance.
And then that brings me to the whole catch 22. We have dozens of cases that come here that were sold non-compliant, and then they come here begging the forgiveness. So it's almost like we're punishing the person for coming to us in the first place if we follow staff recommendation of denial. There is my catch 22 is what I saw when I read this a couple nights ago.
But if I may, when you divide a property up, knowing that you must give the people frontage enough to have a road, not be a landlocked property, that's, that's not a wise choice.
No, it's not, but I. Well, not landlocked, but the.
It doesn't have to write, write a amount of frontage.
But being a farmer on the fringe of growth all these years, I have seen dozens of homesteaded properties sold that may not have hit the whole, they sold them, they even put, I even know, even that, I should say, I've even been told there are cases where they put in the sale that it was not a compliant lot, that people bought it, then when they went to get a building permit for a pool or anything, they walk into the county office and they're like, what? And I've even heard of cases where they tried to go back against the owner or the original owner that sold it to them, if they bought something not realizing that it was non-compliant with the owner. It's happened. It's happened lots of times on the. Get not very senior staff sold it. So. So if we do turn this down, they could very easily make two compliant 300-foot frontage, both 10 acre and stay A1.
Correct.
Also.
Really between the rock and the hard place.
You see, they have a letter of objection also from the Wilton Township Planning Commission Chairman.
I don't know where that Wilton Township had must have been plant commissions.
Yeah. Okay. So have we any more questions for Mr. Presello? Thank you, Jesus.
Thank you.
First of all, are there any objectors or concerned citizens to this case here today? There are not? Okay. Would the owner or primary contact, Cassandra Van Tassel and Todd Kazlowski, they come up, please, to the podium?
He's not here.
The owners are not here tonight? Or representative? Okay.
Then I would ask Mr. Presello another question. Are they, are they currently the owners of the property, or is it under contract to be bought?
So the owners that are requesting the variance are the current owners. So it appears they want to divide it and get the variance approved before they sell it.
We have two choices. We can deny it as recommended.
Do you ladies understand there's 800 feet of frontage? So they could get 200 each minute. Got the pond sits right there between that 300 and 500 from the slot line. I know the property well. Planted and farmed on it. Three times.
Well, our choice is.
Frontage, but not 300 minimum for A1. Right, neither one would be landlocked, but in essence, if you don't have the 300 foot, the county would consider it a flag lot, I guess. Most flag lots are 10 or 15 foot that went bad, so they look like a flag and a pole.
Well, as is with, with no one here to question. We have two choices. We can either postpone this for another time, or we can go with the staff's recommendation and vote for denial.
Well, we can vote yes and no.
We could vote yes or no, and we could vote on this, or, or, yeah, we could, we could vote yes too. I mean.
Makes a motion to table it on behalf of the applicant, I mean, we're doing the applicant a favor, I guess. Because if we vote and it goes no, they, they're done for two years. We vote and somehow goes yes. The staff or the applicant were aware of this meeting, do we know, or was tonight?
Yes, they were aware.
There is the likelihood that still some people don't know we've moved the meetings from 6:30 to 5:00.
Yeah, I, I think as a.
She's a person who's been here many times.
Just as a matter of due process, I, I think I'd push it rather than, because I, I, if I were in your position, I would want to hear about the pond. The pond bothers, I mean, when I look at it, I say, no one wants to draw a boundary line down the middle of a pond. And we're not talking about a flag lot that's 20 feet wide. We're talking about a 200 feet.
They have access to a rope.
Yeah. So that's just.
So it's my recommendation we postpone this.
There is a workaround. There is a workaround. They could divide it, and then when they sell it, get a 50-year lease for the part that's the pond, so they control the pond. There is a workaround. I'm thinking here, I'm thinking like a lawyer. Mr. Chairman, for ZC-25-095 be 25-133, I would make a motion to table until which meeting would we be picking? We load it up on the next one that's going to be real busy?
The 21st has all the cases from last meeting, since we did not have a quorum. So we could potentially do November 4th. There's less.
I have a motion and a second to postpone to November 4th, 2025. Would you give me a roll, please?
Kimberly Mitchell. John Kiefner.
Yes.
Louis Navarrette.
Yes.
Karen Warwick. Chairman Hughes Tippin.
Yes.
Chairman Hughes-Dippen?
Yes.
Jesus gets to do the report again.
Thank you very much, everyone. Next case, case number ZC-25-087 slash V-25-120. And Jesus Prisano again. Getting quite a load there.
Okay, I'll be going over zoning case 25087. The owner of the property is James Siciliano. The applicant is applying for variance to build an attached garage to the existing home on the property.
Good show, babe.
Okay. So here we have a zoning map of the property. The property is zoned A1 and is 123 acres in size with 1,324 feet of lot frontage along South Park Avenue. The parcel is deemed a conforming A1 parcel. The property is split in half by South Park Avenue, but is still considered one parcel. The surrounding parcels are all zoned A1. Here we have an aerial view of the subject property. The property is approved as a single-family home that is located on the western side of South Park Avenue. Per the property record card, the home was constructed in 1890. The property has access to South Park Avenue via an existing gravel driveway. The property owner submitted a building permit to construct an attached garage to the home. As staff reviewed the plot of survey, it was discovered that the home is 56 feet from the center line of the road. The A1 zoning district requires a minimum street setback of 100 feet from the center line of the road. Since the home was built in 1890 before, before any active zoning ordinance, the home is deemed to be a legal non-conforming. Adding in addition to the home causes the home to lose its legal non-conforming status since staff considers any addition to the home to be extending the non-conformity. Therefore, before the zoning department can approve the building permit, the variance needs to be approved. We have a plot of survey showing the parcel as well as the existing home and the proposed attached garage located to the north of the existing home. We have a few pictures of the property. First, a view looking west at the existing home. Here the view again looking west at the location of the attached garage, the proposed location of the attached garage. The view looking at the northwest portion of the property. The view looking at the southwest portion of the property. The view looking east at the remaining property, portion of the property across South Park Avenue. The view looking north down South Park Avenue. And the view looking south down South Park Avenue. Now to quickly go over Section 1 of the variance standards and review criteria. For Section 1, staff finds the plot owner is due to unique circumstances. As mentioned before, the existing home of the property... Existing home of the property has existed since 1890. As mentioned before, since an addition is being added on to, the home itself loses its non-conforming status. Therefore, the property needs to have the variance approved to have the building permit approved to build the attached addition to existing home. And staff also finds that the variance, if granted, will not alter the essential character of the locality. As mentioned before, the existing home of the property has existed in property since 1890, and since then has basically become part of the neighborhood. Now looking at variance criteria standards 2. Staff finds a particular physical surroundings shape, maybe a hardship, the applicant would like to build an attached garage to the existing home. As I mentioned before, the home is deemed to be a legal non-conforming use, but adding addition to the home is extending non-conformity, and therefore variance is required to bring the home into compliance. Staff also finds that variance will not impair an adequate supply of air or increase the danger of fire. The proposed garage and the existing home are essentially located in the 123-acre property, therefore reducing the chances of impacting any nearby structures. So with that said, staff is recommending approval of the variance and ODH is notified. There were no objections or comments, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
I have no questions. Anyone have any questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Are there any concerned citizens or objectors to this case? There are not, okay. Is the owner present? Yes, sir. We have no concerned citizens and we have a recommendation of approval. You're welcome to come up and speak if you'd like to, otherwise we'll just take a vote, it's up to you. Okay, thank you, sir. Then I would entertain a motion on case ZC-25-087 at all.
Chairman, vote for approval of ZC 25-07 for variance, 25-120 for variance for street setback on 100 feet.
I have a motion and a second. May I have a roll call, both, please?
Yes. Karen Warwick? Louis Navaret?
Yes.
John Keefner?
Yes.
Kimberly Mitchell? Chairman Hughes-Dippen?
Next case tonight is ZC-25-089 slash V-25-122. And Kelly Krzyzinski will present this case. Give Jesus some time to rest.
The owner is Thomas Goleck, and the applicant is requesting a variance for street setback from the center line of a non-dedicated road from 100 feet to 65 feet. Here, the subject property is outlined in red. This is an aerial view of the property and the surrounding properties. The subject property is located in New Lenox Township along a private shared easement. The easement has access from Parker Road located to the west. The applicant is proposing to construct a single-family residence on site. Here, the property is also shown outside, or outlined in red. The subject property is zone E2 and is surrounded by other E2 properties and one A1 property. Here's a plot of survey of the property. The subject property is parcel 2. Here is the site plan for the property. The proposed residence is shown encroaching on the required street yard setback of a non-dedicated roadway. The applicant is requesting a variance to allow the residents to encroach on this required This is the view looking north along Parker Road. This is looking across from the private easement. This is looking south along Parker Road. This is looking east along the easement from Parker Road. This is looking northeast at the subject property from the southwest corner. This is looking north at the subject property. This is looking south across the street, or across the easement from the subject property. And this is looking northwest at the subject property. This is looking west towards Parker Road. And this is looking at the end of the easement. So for Section 1 of the variance review criteria, staff finds that the applicant is not due to unique circumstances. Staff finds that the location of the proposed residence is due to the applicant's personal preference, which cannot be considered a unique circumstance. For, or, or criteria B, staff finds that if the variance is granted, it will not alter the essential character of locality. The proposed single-family residence will be located along the private drive. The residence will likely be difficult to view from the public road, which is Parker Road. And additionally, there is another residence located along the private easement that appears to encroach on the setback requirement. For the Section 2 of the variance criteria, the physical conditions of the property do not create a hardship. While there is floodplain on the eastern portion of the property, there is none located at the rear that would prevent the owner from meeting the required street yard setback. Staff also finds that the variance would not harm the public or neighboring properties. The parcel has existed this way since 1991, and the encroachment will not impact any local traffic. Also, the applicant has submitted a building permit for the residence and will be required to meet all the applicable codes. Of agencies notified, no comments were received, and staff is recommending denial of the variance for the street yard setback. And I'm happy to answer any questions, but also the applicant would like to speak tonight as well. Thank you.
You do recommend denial because of the restrictions on the 100 feet for setback setup, right? That's why he wants to be closer?
Yeah, it's mainly because it's personal preference, because there is floodplain located on the property, or shown on GIS, but it's located on the eastern portion of the property, which wouldn't restrict it from meeting the street setback. So, so, yeah.
Okay. And, and if it gets approved, it'll just be a non-conforming approved lot, is correct?
Well, this is already, it's already a legal non-conforming lot. It previously received a variance for the lot frontage, so it's already, that's already in conformance.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, that's...
Yes, it's, yeah, the street setback is what they're requesting.
Does anyone else have any questions?
I guess I would ask, it's a non-dedicated road. Is there such a distinction as a private drive? I mean, technically, we would, you see these all the time, it says private drive, there's three, four, five houses on them, but what's the difference between this, a non-dedicated road and a dedicated road? Does that mean they're in charge of their own snow removal and their own road maintenance? The people there are...
Yes, correct, yes. Yeah, the, whatever the road district in the area, yeah, doesn't have jurisdiction over this, so they maintain it themselves, yeah.
Each, each house that's on that.
Yeah. I see it's white enough by appearance that it covers fire safety and all the other things, so...
They started requiring the turnaround cul-de-sacs.
Yeah.
Department's, because they have the dead-end, dead-end private drives that they couldn't get in and out of.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you very much, Kelly. Are there any concerned citizens or objectors to this case here tonight? There are not, okay. Mr. Goleck here tonight, would you care to speak, sir?
I would like to say that...
Please introduce yourself, even though I...
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm, I'm the property owner, Thomas Goleck.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. I have to say that I disagree with the staff recommendations because it does not address a natural ditch that has been untouched since I purchased the property, and it runs through the property. I brought along my civil engineer who can give a much better explanation. I also brought along some pictures so you can see just what that ditch looks like.
Excuse me, sir. If we, if we look at the pictures, you have to give them to staff.
Yeah, yeah.
They have to be in the records. So just describe them to us if you want.
Or you can give them to us. You mean for us to keep them?
Yeah.
Oh, if you do that, that's fine.
Yeah. Yeah, I have five copies, more than a share.
Yeah.
So it's your contention that there's a natural ditch there?
Yes, there is.
Thank you, sir.
That would inhibit you from pushing far away from the road and maintaining...
It would require, it would require some...
Oh, I see.
Routing of it, I guess.
Deep enough that it must be...
But I, I have my civil engineer here who can, you know, further describe...
Okay.
What the problems may be.
Name is Michael Regina, Regina Engineers and Surveyors, 1225 Shenan Road, Joliet, Illinois. As the owner has said, we disagree with the conclusions in the staff report as there is a natural ditch that runs from the northwest to the southeast across the, you know, center of the, center of the property. And we've placed the house on high, you know, high ground in the southwest corner of the property to minimize the impacts that the owner would have on that existing ditch plus the existing woods that surround that ditch. And there is, you know, reviewing, you know, Will County's on their GIS, their contour layer, you know, there is approximately 15 acres of drainage upstream that runs northwesterly all the way up to Regan and Parker that this property does accept. So, you know, the potential costs of rerouting this ditch. And also, I think the staff report has identified a property with, on that street that is not conforming.
I, I know of a number of cases where they have tried to reroute ditches and creeks, and they go back to their banks and miss to meet this damage layer.
Water, water seems to find its way.
Yes, right. Okay. Have we had any questions, anyone? Well, thank you very much. And this is your reasoning, but this is your reasoning for wanting to move it where it is, is understandable. Thank you, sir. We have no more questions, I'm going to go ahead. I have, I'll entertain a motion on ZC 25-089 and V-25-122.
We're going to make a motion for approval. ZC 25-089.
I have a motion and I have a second. May I have a roll call, please?
Karen Warwick?
Yes.
Louis Navaret?
Yes.
John Keefner?
Yes.
Kimberly Mitchell? Chairman Hughes-Dippen?
All right, sir, you're approved. Our next case tonight is ZC-25-072 slash V-25-108. Here, let me give you a copy of this. Oh, go in and file.
I got the attendance too. We forgot that last time.
And Marguerite Kenny will be the presenter on this case. Good evening, ma'am, how are you? Good.
So zoning case ZC 25072 takes place in Plainfield Township. The subject property is 17563 South Richmond Road in Plainfield. The owner is Jose Queiras, and the attorney is Gina Madden. This app, or this property is Lot 41 in the Williamsburg subdivision, Unit 3, which was platted back in 1989. And the property is currently under construction with a single-family residence that has a 994 square foot attached garage. The applicant is seeking to build a 36 by 44 detached garage, which would then put them over the accessory building area limit. So they are requesting a variance to allow up to 2,579 square feet of accessory building So on the screen, you can see the property is zoned R2A, which is a single-family zoning district, and it is surrounded to the north, south, and west, also by R2A districts, also within the Williamsburg subdivision. To the east, we have A1, which is the E&amp;J railroad, and then we have the Village of Plainfield east of that. So the property itself has 129 feet of lot frontage along Richmond Road and is about 30,000 square feet in area. Property lies within the Joliet facility planning area despite being surrounded more closely by the Village of Plainfield. Like I mentioned, the property has secured a building permit for the single-family residents. Earlier this year, they also have applied for that detached accessory structure, and instead of changing the size, which they can build up to, I believe, 800 feet or square feet, more of accessory building area to put them... or square feet, more of accessory building area to put them at the limit for the R2A district, they are allowed to build up to 1,800 square feet. So just zooming in on the property, you can see with the GIS aerials, this did not show the construction starting quite yet from earlier this year. So the platte survey on the screen shows the subject property. I have the two accessory structures, or what we would consider accessory building area, outlined in red. The darker lines is the proposed accessory building area that has yet to be constructed. So looking at the existing foundation of the house, as the property is under current construction, you can see, this is the 994-square-foot garage, and then just looking straight east on the subject property. Looking north and northwest along Richmond Road. Looking west. And looking south and southwest. So the criteria by which variances are reviewed is outlined in the staff report and provided on the screen. To briefly summarize, staff finds that the owner's plight is not due to unique circumstances. As you know from many other commission meetings, this is a common request across all residential zoning districts. The property is building a 994-square-foot attached garage, which leaves 806 square feet available for the accessory building area to meet the limit. It's the applicant's preference to exceed the permitted limit and seek this zoning relief. Staff finds that if this variance is granted, it may alter the essential character of the locality. This subject property appears to be the last unimproved lot within the subdivision. The only other property within this portion of the subdivision that has attached and detached garages is 17624 South Richmond Road, and appears to have a total of 1,794 square feet of accessory building area, which meets the limit. So this proposed request would exceed that 1,800-square-foot limit by 959 square feet, which could and likely would impact the essential character of this area. Staff is recommending denial of the request. Of the agencies notified, none objected. The Health Department did comment that they would have to sign off on the accessory structure to confirm that they would not be anywhere near their septic or well, and that would be required as part of the building permit. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
I have none. Does anyone have any questions?
Get someone to ask clarification. You mentioned one other property in Richmond, but it's right at the map, they didn't need a variant.
Correct. They are just under the 18, correct.
The map I'm looking at, looks like there's one on Jamestown, too, but maybe not.
The foundation for the garage is there. They have yet to put in the foundation for the whole building.
The attached garage.
The attached garage is there. This request is for a detached garage.
And so if we deny it, they still can build an 800 and some square foot detached building, which would be about half the size of what they're looking for?
Correct. They could also amend their request to build less, or they can go through an administrative adjustment that would allow them to go up to, I believe, 1980 square feet if they went through an administrative adjustment process instead.
But your main source of denial is it would possibly alter the location, because there are very few, if any, that even have accessory structures yet alone over the limits?
Correct.
Any other questions? Thank you very much, Margaret, appreciate it. Are there any objectors or concerned citizens to this case? There are no objectors or concerned citizens, okay. I speak to Gina Madden, who's the legal representative.
That's some bad traffic.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. My name is Gina Madden, and I represent the owner of the property. And I would like to make a couple of comments with respect to the findings of fact and, and staff's recommendation. In terms of the essential character of the area, I do believe that there are two other accessory structure, structures that I will just refer to loosely as a pole building, because I think we can all kind of envision what that looks like. My understanding is those are, as staff indicated, at 17624 Richmond Road, but also at 17623, to my knowledge. I don't have the dimensions of that structure, but I do believe that having two pole building type accessory structures goes to the issue of, of the essential character of the neighborhood. It's my position, I, I don't think that the essential character of the area would be disturbed or in any way altered by your recommending this variance for my client. In fact, I think aesthetically that there could be recommendations made if there's a concern from an aesthetic view, but with two other properties having at least similar structures, if this were the first, I could perhaps understand the concern on a different level, but with two other existing accessory structures that are similar in nature to this request, I object to that characterization. With respect to hardship... This is not, I think that when we talk about unique circumstances and hardship, I'd like to talk about those concerns collectively. My client is in the home renovation business, and accordingly, he has a need for this structure that goes beyond just personal use. Granted, there would also be personal use involved, but he does have a 14-foot trailer that's used to, it's more of a dump truck style trailer, but it's not a truck attached to it. It's a, a trailer that's used for removal of debris after demolition and so forth, along with a 12-foot utility trailer, substantial materials and tools that he uses in his line of work. And based on the Will County parking ordinance, he would not be able to have all of those utility trailers in his driveway and visible. I, I think that aesthetically, or in terms of not disturbing the character of the area, I'd be more concerned with the placement of those trailers and then his personal recreational vehicles, more so than I would this being the third accessory pole barn style building on the block.
Question is, if I may, that he can't get it into a smaller building that would conform to our zoning code?
I don't know to the extent that would be possible along with the, the other items, for instance, the, the recreational type all-terrain vehicle. So that, that's the basis for, for requesting, in addition to just the tools of his trade that would not be storing them in the attached garage would not be conducive to his, his business.
Okay. We can confirm that neighbors were notified? It was at least, what, five? So, um, great shot.
Yes.
Without neighbors here objecting, suppose I'll vote for this, but I'm thinking far past this. You say that you think staff mischaracterizes, I think they might have it perfect, because this case, if we approve it, could open the door for others in that neighborhood to start doing this. And since I'm familiar with this area, and I know what a flood did to this area in 1996, I know that the retention ponds for this development are based on numbers of when they build, so if we start letting X number of lots exceed the accessory building area, and in the case of this lot, it looks like he's putting it back, which means a lot more of his lot, if we have an impervious, some type of pavement to get to it. Before you know it, 20 years down the road, all these people are going to say, we need to do something about all this flooding, there's so much water, because now it might flood bad when there's six-inch rain, but if you get X number of accessory structures on, say, just 5% more of his lot, and I know through time, every one of those retention ponds is probably lacking the maintenance, has weeds growing in them, silt and sediment ability. Sooner or later, this is going to be one of them areas that people are screaming to government, you have to do something, we're flooding every time it rains. And I do have that knowledge of knowing it was the EJNE Railroad that back in a big, major flood in 1996 that acted as a major dam and flooded hundreds of homes, and then as my one-nick friend told me, all of a sudden, all the water disappeared because the water breached the EJNE railroad bed and just swept away about 300-foot tracks. And this is a very low, flat-lying area that... That's what happens when you build houses on flat farm ground, but since neighbors aren't here, I guess I will vote for it.
Thank you.
Other than the staff denial, I guess I could say I'm 55, 45%. Be one of the commissioners, they... I need to tell people now, too.
Have we any more questions for the attorney?
Time, Roger.
It would be the substantial amount of tools that he uses in his home renovation work, also...
One of those large cargo make dump trucks.
Yes, that's exactly what it is, thank you.
They're not exactly pretty, so if he did get it inside, it would be better for the neighborhood. It might get so full to another truck, but it might end up outside anyways. Well, they're usually 16, 18-foot. They're making some, now, like, all seven tons, ten tons, they're... So I guess I could ask staff this, obviously, certain home occupying, home occupation businesses are allowed up to a certain number of people, there's nothing to stop them from bringing that trailer home.
I mean, if it goes inside a constructed building, and it's kept there outside of, you know, him going to work, that could be, you know, considered allowable. If it's kept outside, then it comes down to the license plate classification, and if it exceeds a certain license plate classification, it would not be allowed. But in terms of the home business, home, you know, it cannot occur from that detached garage, it would have to occur from someplace inside the primary residence if he was to operate as like a home occupation. So if he has an office, it's probably inside the house, that's where it would be allowed. And then you can have your accessory storage of equipment, things like that, inside a detached garage.
Have any more questions for the attorney? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
I'll leave her just standing there. All right. We'll entertain a motion on ZC 25-072 slash V-25-0, or 108. I have a motion and a second. May I have a roll call, please?
John Keefner?
I'll go now.
Louis Navrat?
Yes.
Karen Warwick? Kimberly Mitchell? Roger Benhausen?
Yes.
Chairman Hughes-Dippen?
No.
We don't have four.
We don't have seven.
So, well...
I wish we had seven.
Yeah. So it's a denial. Our next case tonight is ZC-25-090 slash V-25-123. And Marguerite Kenny will be the presenter.
Roger, we turned in the attendance sheet before you...
What's that?
We turned in the attendance sheet.
Oh.
She's, she's got you. That must have been some really bad traffic.
Thank you for attending, by the way, I appreciate it.
Thank you for that patience. Okay, zoning case, ZC 25090 takes place in Homer Township. The property is 16701 West 140th Street in Lockport. The owner and applicant is Danielle Giannola, and this property is on the south side of West 140th Street, which is a private road. The city of Lockport is directly south of the subject property. Property is a little over 1 acre, and it is zoned R3, which is a single-family residential zoning district. The property abuts a private road, as it does not have technical lot frontage, as mentioned. However, there were previous deeds that showed that it has a recorded access easement for 140th Street, which is undedicated, that continues westwards towards Smith Road, and the lot existed since 1965. Combined, it becomes a conforming lot. It's deemed legal non-conforming, just because when the lot was established, the zoning ordinance did not have the standards for direct lot frontage requirements along a publicly dedicated roadway. So they're not pursuing a variance for frontage, but they are pursuing a variance for accessory building area. So this one, similarly to the other zoning case earlier tonight, it is off a private road. In this instance, the road actually runs like along the shared property lines between the properties to the north and south. You'll see this is a very narrow road, but in terms of zoning, the property is zoned R3. We have R1 districts immediately north. We have R1 single-family residential proposed within Lockport directly south, and then to the east and west, and in the kind of rest of the area, it's zoned R3. So looking at the aerial of the property, you can see, Smith Road is the main thoroughfare to the west, and then turning onto 140th Street, it becomes a private road as it continues north and south. When it jogs south, then it becomes the private drive that crosses about 11 properties as a private, private road and not maintained by the Homer Township Road Authority. So zooming in, this property did get a building permit for a single-family residence that was issued back in 2023, so there is an improved 792-square-foot attached garage with this house. This property still needs to complete a few of the last remaining inspections to actually have this permit closed out, but the property also has 160-square-foot shed on the property and a 12-by-16-foot gazebo. Combined, the existing building area is 1,144 square feet, and the R3 district allows up to 1,500 square feet. The applicant is, is seeking to construct a 30-by-50-square-foot pole building, so about 1,500 square feet, and it is shown on their proposed location to meet all the required setbacks. The structure would have to adhere to the Health Department's septic setback requirements as well, and if this were to be allowed, the total combined accessory building area that would exist on this property is 2,751 square feet. I do apologize the way the different structures are shown on this platte of survey is in the different direction than kind of the orientation of the platte, but this... But this just shows the fact that there is, you know, your attached garage. You have the shed, a gazebo, and then you have the proposed building. So looking at some photos, we have the single-family residence with that attached garage. This is looking at a close-up of the garage. And then we are looking south towards the proposed location of that accessory structure. And further south, on the left-hand side is the image looking south. The image on the right is looking east towards adjacent properties. The image on the left is looking north towards the residence. And then the image on the right is looking west towards part of 140th that continues south towards that adjacent property owner. And then this is looking east and west along that private road, which is 140th Street. It is a very narrow private road. It basically can fit a single car. So the criteria by which these, or this variance request was analyzed is shown on the screen. The full in-depth analysis is provided in your staff report. Staff finds that the owner's plight is due to unique circumstances in this particular case. While the previous zoning case before you was for a similar request, and it is a common request across all zoning districts, this subject property is over twice the size of a standard R3 district, which is 20,000 square feet. The proposed request is less than double the maximum accessory building area. It's only about a 1,251 square foot increase from what the limit is for the R3 district. The property is also heavily wooded, so maintaining such a property requires more equipment than a less wooded property. So what they are requesting, you saw some outdoor equipment being stored. They would like to put that inside to protect it from the weather. Staff finds if the variance is granted, it would not alter the essential character of the locality. This area, the pole barn, would be screened from the existing wooded areas around the property lines, and it would be difficult to see from the private drive. Staff finds that the physical surroundings, shape, topographical conditions of the property could result in a hardship, just again, due to the physical characteristics of the property and that it is double the size of a standard R3 lot. It's staff's opinion that the granting of the variance would not be detrimental to the public welfare or induly injurious to other property improvements in the area. It would also not impair adequate supply of air to adjacent properties or substantially increase the danger of fire or endanger public safety or diminish or impair property values within the neighborhood. The applicant lives on the property, would be required to obtain the required building permit for this structure. And accordingly, they would want to keep the equipment, as mentioned, currently stored outside inside the structure and would need the additional storage space to do so. Whoops. That is incorrect on the slide, but of the agencies notified, the Health Department again stated that the sign-off, they would have to sign off on their building permit. And then the Northwest Fire or Homer Fire Protection District stated they had no problems with the request, but if it, there is a commercial use to the property, they would have to comply with the appropriate regulations. That's incorrect on the slide. So staff is recommending approval of the variance for the maximum accessory building area from 1,500 square feet to 2,751 square feet. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Anyone have any questions? Thank you very much. Are there any objectors or concerned citizens to this case? There are not? Okay. Is the applicant here? Yes, ma'am. There's no objectors or concerned citizens, and we have a recommendation of approval. You're welcome to speak if you want, but otherwise, we'll just take a vote. Okay. Case number ZZ-25-090 slash V-25-123. I'd like a motion, please.
I'd make a motion to the ZZ25-090... V-25-3 for variance for maximum accessory building area.
I have a motion and a second. May I have a roll call?
Roger Benhausen?
Yes.
Louis Navrat? Karen Warwick? Kimberly Mitchell? John Kiefern? Chairman Hughes Tippin?
Yes. You've passed. Our next case tonight is ZZ-25-074 slash M-25-010 and V-25-110 and V-25-131. And Kelly Kuziski is our presenter again.
Alrighty. So yes, this is for ZZ-25-074. The owner of the property is Joe Andy Holdings and the agent is Anna Lukansky... Skye, sorry about that. The applicant is requesting a map amendment from A1 to C6 for one pin in a variance for maximum accessory building height or maximum, yeah, maximum accessory building height from 25 feet to 28.5 feet in a variance for fence height within a street setback from four feet to six feet. Okay, so this is the zoning map of the property. The subject property contains two separate pins. The parcels combined have a total of about 12.5 acres with 950 feet of frontage along Old Route 1. The southern pin is zoned C6 and the northern pin is zoned A1. The subject parcel is surrounded by residential and agricultural zoning. The pink area on the screen shows the village of Crete. This is an aerial view of the subject property. The subject property is outlined in yellow and the map amendment area is outlined in red. The property currently operates as a recreational property that rents out the space for private parties and events. The owner was placed in violation for building without a permit in January of 2024. The applicant submitted a building permit for these structures in December of 2024. Upon review of the building permit, it was determined that one of the buildings is located out or located on the northern parcel, which is zoned A1. The recreational use is not a permitted use within the A1 district. The applicant is requesting to rezone to combine the northern parcel with the southern C6 parcel and continue the existing recreational use on these parcels. Additionally, staff found that both the building constructed without a permit and the existing fence both exceed the maximum height requirements. The applicant is requesting variances to bring these into compliance. This shows a zoning map for the properties within a one-mile radius of the subject parcel. The zoning districts within one mile include agricultural, residential, commercial, and industrial. This is the village of Crete's current zoning map with the subject property shown in yellow. The only zoning located within a mile that's located within the village of Crete is IT, which is Intermo... Intermodal Terminal. Here is a plat of survey of the property. This shows the existing conditions of the property as well as the two structures that were constructed without a permit, which are the two northernmost structures. This is looking south along Old Route 1 from the southwest corner. This is looking, oh, sorry. This is looking at the subject property from the southwest corner. This is looking north along Old Route 1 from the southwest corner. This is looking at the entrance. This is looking southwest at the property from the entrance. This is looking across, or west across, the street from the subject property entrance. This is looking at the existing, or south along the existing fence line. This is looking along the existing fence line to the north. This is looking south along Old Route 1 from the northwest corner. And this is looking north along Old Route 1 from the northwest corner. And this is looking southeast at the subject property from the northwest corner. So with the, or to go over the map amendment review criteria, a full analysis is in the staff report, but for a summary, within a mile radius of the property, there is a mix of uses within unincorporated Will County and the village of Crete. These uses include residential, public, recreational, and industrial uses. In unincorporated Will County, there are various residential homes and subdivisions, including the Village Woods Senior Living located across Route 394. Public uses include a nature preserve and trail, while recreational uses include the Valmore Horse Racing Track, a golf course, and the subject property. Within the village of Crete, the land use is primarily vacant or used for crop farming. The primary unincorporated zoning districts within one mile are A1, R3, and C6. And then, as I mentioned before, the only zoning within the village of Crete is the IT, Intermodal Terminal zoning district. To continue, the agent intends to use the property for recreational, commercial uses. Use would not be permitted in the A1 district, but is permitted in the C6 district. The proposed zoning change aligns with the Will County Land Resource Management Plan, which supports commercial uses along arterial roads. For the variance request for building height, staff found that the conditions were not due to unique circumstances. The structure was built after purchasing the property without obtaining a permit. While the applicant is now working to bring the property into compliance, the hardship was self-created. Staff finds that this variance may alter the character of the area. No other nearby structures appear to exceed the height limit. However, it is worth noting that the building cannot be seen from the roadway and, or the surrounding land is mainly undeveloped. For the variance for fence height, staff found that the request is not due to unique circumstances. The fence was in place at the time that the applicant purchased the property in 2019 and appears to have been built 30 or, yeah, 35 to 40 years ago. There is no record of a variance being granted, and the applicant has chosen to request the variance and not to relocate the fence outside of the street setback. Staff finds that the granting this variance would not alter the essential character of the area. The fence has been in place for almost 35 to 40 years without any known complaints or safety issues. Of agencies notified, there was no objections received, and staff is recommending approval of the map amendment and then denial for both of the variances. I can't answer any questions, and I believe the owners and applicant are also here today.
I have a question about the variance for the fence height. I can understand them wanting to match the fence height that's been there for so long.
Yeah.
You were objecting to it just because it's against our current zoning law?
Yes, correct. It just doesn't meet the current code requirement for the fence height. So, and I did look back and at the time, when it was constructed about, the fence height in the street setback was actually three feet. So they were already, they were double that when they constructed it, so.
Okay. I know our zoning codes on fences have changed so many times.
Yeah, I'm sure.
And there's so many differentials because of things like power sources and different swimming pool heights and all kinds of things that have caused different fence heights to be included in our zoning laws. Thank you very much.
I want to ask, so your answer to Hugh kind of makes things a lot clearer because you mentioned that you don't think it's due to unique circumstances, but then you admit the fence was built 35, 40 years ago and long before the applicant even bought it. But you're, so you're saying though, but when it was built, there was a three-foot requirement.
Correct, yes. Maximum in street, yeah.
They would have needed a variance to even put it up.
Correct, yes.
I'd give them grace on that 35 years. There's no way to want to move it. And given the whole issue of attractive nuisance, I'd much rather see them have a six-foot fence than a three or a four-foot fence to keep people off the property.
Why would anybody put up a three-foot fence? That wouldn't even, wouldn't even keep rabbits out.
I was a 12-year-old boy. I tried to hurt it. But, I mean, the one thing you really had to point out is that is a dead-end street going south.
Correct, yes.
The thing people go down that street is for mischief, hide from their parents, or to go to this property, I think.
Yeah, I, yeah.
And the few, I mean, instances, yeah.
Yeah, there was no one out there.
I'd take a little exception about it not being due to unique circumstances. I'd give a little more leeway. Yeah.
Okay.
And you did say the 28 now foot really isn't visible to anybody either.
No, I wasn't able to visit it, or not. When I visited the site, I wasn't able to see it from the roadway at all from both roads. I wasn't able to view the building.
Thank you.
And if this was a property instead of a C6, it says C6, A1. And that's where the problem comes in because it gets staged across both properties, so.
Correct, yeah. Yeah, that's, that's the main reason is the, even though this has been used for recreational, commercial for a long time, is that the buildings were constructed on the northern parcel, which isn't zoned for that. So, yeah, they're, they're looking to expand basically the C6 zoning and the use.
Okay. Thank you very much.
I should ask for clarification, then. So on item one here, it says map amendment from A1 to C6 and in the parentheses, dash 003, that's supposed to be point 003.
Dash 003, so that indicates that's for the northern parcel, so I'll show that.
Referring to its pin number or something.
Yeah, so that's the pin number, yeah.
Not 300th of an acre, that would be.
No. Yeah, so the northern pin, yeah, which is shown in red on the screen here, so.
Any other questions for Kelly? Thank you very much. Are there any concerned citizens or objectors to this case here tonight? There are not? Okay. May I hear from the primary agent? Anna Lukasik?
You didn't very good with that.
Possibly.
I would have played it safe and just said, Anna.
So many different pronunciations.
What is your correct pronunciation?
Polish Lukasik. Anglo-sized Lukasik.
Anglo-sized, do you speak in Polish or do you Anglo-size it?
Anglo-sized, it would be Lukasik.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, like you were saying, like Kelly was saying, the fence was, has been there for the last 34, 35, 40 years. When the current owner purchased it, it was already there. The previous owner told him it's been, it's been there forever. So, and he doesn't want to move it. There are a couple ponds on the, on the property, so it's for the safety to keep people away so nothing happens. So he would like to keep it the way it is right now. As for the building, the property is uneven. There is actually, if you look, there is engineering drawing is part of staff report. And you can see that there is a difference of almost eight feet from the front of the building to the eight, to the rear of the building. So if he was to meet the maximum allowed 25, it would be barely even seen on the, on one of the sides. It would be like more, more buried in the, in the hill. The whole property, that's why it's not visible from the, from the road because it's actually in the lower part of the property.
Okay. Yeah, the one problem we have is that he started building without a permit.
Yeah, that, that one. Yeah, he thought he's not visible from there, you know. No one can see him from the road. Yeah, we are, we are bringing it to compliance. Permit is already, architectural drawings are already approved. We're just waiting for the variance to.
Okay. Any other questions from anybody? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Case number ZZ-25-074 at all, I would request a motion.
Mr. Chairman, 25074 and 25... Mr. Chairman, twenty-five zero seven four and twenty-five zero one zero. Approval of map amendment from A1 to C6 dash zero zero three.
I have a motion second, may I have a roll call?
Kimberly Mitchell? John Keefner?
Yes.
Roger Bentonhausen?
Yes.
Louis Neverett? Karen Warwick? Chairman Hughes Tippin?
Yes.
And case oh seven four, B twenty-five dash one ten. Approval variance for maximum building height from twenty-five feet to twenty-eight point five feet.
I have a motion second, may I have a roll call?
Kimberly Mitchell? John Keefner?
Yes.
Roger Bentonhausen?
Yes.
Louis Neverett? Karen Warwick? Chairman Hughes Tippin?
Yes.
Chairman, same oh seven four case, B twenty-five dash one three one. Approval variance for fence height within a street setback from four feet to six feet.
I have a motion second, roll call please.
Kimberly Mitchell? John Keefner?
Yes.
Roger Bentonhausen?
Yes.
Louis Neverett? Karen Warwick? Chairman Hughes Tippin?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Okay. Our next case is the TUP twenty-five zero zero eight. Temporary permit, use permit for mobile office trailer. And I, I presume you're going to do it, my dear?
I will. Um, I just wanted to note that the applicant and attorney for, um, the ZZ two-five zero nine five is here now. Um, so if you want to make a motion to renew the case, you did request it to be tabled. I believe you can make that motion to have it heard before you, or we can wait until our legal returns. Um, and I can present the temporary use permit and we can have that discussion after the end.
I have no objection to that. What does the board say? Poll the board? Hear the case? Okay.
Yes.
Yeah, we'll hear the case. So we, I presume that we have to get a motion to cancel the postponement.
I didn't know this was possible.
I can present on the temporary use permit that gives our legal a chance to come back and explain what the process would be. Yeah, I believe he'll be back shortly. I can do the temporary use permit in the meantime.
I do think we have to make a motion though anyway to bring this case forward after we postponed it, so.
We'll make it when we're done with TUP. The legal staff said that's the first thing to do.
Okay, so this zoning case is temporary use permit two-five zero zero eight. It takes place in Frankfort Township. The property is one-nine-six-zero-zero Harlem Avenue in Frankfort. Um, this purpose is to operate, if you recall, this property came before this commission, I believe, earlier this year, for a special use permit for a self-service storage facility. Um, and they are hoping to operate U-Haul truck and trailer business, um, on the property. This temporary use permit is for a mobile office trailer so that they can start this business while the property is still being constructed. So I have the aerial on the screen. This property is about just shy of seven acres. It is combined with two pins, um, both of which are zone C4, which is a highway commercial zoning district, and has a special use permit for that self-service storage facility. And you could see from the aerials, it is currently under construction. Um, you'll see it in the photos as well. Um, so just zooming in, you can see both properties outlined in yellow. And again, both properties are outlined in yellow with the zoning districts. So we have the Highland Ridge South subdivision directly, uh, west of the property. And then we have Cook County directly east on the other side of Harlem. Um, we have Benton Drive, which is a commercial strip mall to the south. And then some C, um, some other general commercial to the north. So in terms of this proposed temporary use request, the property owners began construction of this self-service storage facility earlier this year. Um, that included demolition of some existing structures and preparing the site for the new buildings. The temporary office trailer is needed to facilitate, uh, the storage leases while the maiden office and storage facilities are being constructed. The mobile office trailer would be removed from the site once the permanent office is completed. Uh, the stated hours of operation are seven AM to seven PM, and this temporary office would be occupied by two to three people. Um, it would have electrical connections and a sanitary service. The sanitary service would be in, uh, would include, um, weekly maintenance or removal of the waste, um, on a weekly basis. So on the screen, I have the approved site plan, um, for the new U-Haul facility. So the building on the right-hand side is what's being constructed right now. Um, the future office is what's going to be to the south. Once that's constructed, that's when that temporary office trailer would be, uh, no longer needed. So just looking at some of the photos of the property, this is looking at the subject site looking west. This is looking, um, south along Harlem Avenue. This is looking north along Harlem Avenue. This is looking north. Northwest, um, you can see some of the stairwells and elevator shaft, I believe, um, being constructed. And then this is looking at the existing commercial structures, um, south of the subject property. And this structure would eventually be demolished and then their new office would be built in its place. Um, staff is recommending approval of this temporary use permit with five conditions. The staff report says eleven conditions, which is incorrect. It should be the five conditions which are shown on the screen. Um, the staff report does list the same five conditions. It just recommends eleven conditions instead of the five. Um, the department did not receive any objections from the notified parties, which is includes the Frankfort Fire Protection District, um, IDOT, which has jurisdiction over Harlem Avenue or the Health Department. Um, and with these conditions, I can read through them quickly. The temporary use permit would be valid for one year from the date of issuance. The inspection by the Will County Land Use Department's Building Division shall be carried out prior to the issuance of a full temporary use permit approval. Temporary structures shall comply with all requirements of the Will County Building Division, um, as well as the Fire District, which is Frankfort Fire Protection District, and the Will County Health Department. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
I have no questions. Anyone have any questions? Thank you very much. Are there any objectors or concerned citizens to this case? There are not, okay. As the owner or applicant here tonight or a representative? Okay, uh, we have recommendation of approval. No concerned citizens objecting. You're welcome to come and speak if you want. Otherwise, we'll just vote on it. Okay, thank you, sir.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. May I have a roll call, please?
Karen Warwick? Louis Neverett? Roger Bentonhausen?
Yes.
John Keefner?
Yes.
Kimberly Mitchell? Chairman Hughes Tippin?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, take care, sir. Uh. I'll check with our legal counsel here. I believe that the, the people are here to, uh, that were missing earlier and we've moved the case. I believe we have to make a motion to.
Make a mo- motion to pull it off the table.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, motion to remove ZZ twenty-five zero nine five, B twenty-five dash one two three.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. All that favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay. So case number ZZ dash twenty-five dash zero nine five slash B dash twenty-five dash one three three. This is presented, I was going to present the case.
Try to improve on the first one.
Okay, since this was heard, I'll try to go a little bit faster this time. So as mentioned again, this is zoning case two-five zero nine five. This is a variance for lot frontage from three hundred feet to two hundred point eleven feet. Other property is Cassandra Van Tasso and Todd Kazlowski. The applicant is applying for variance for lot frontage to divide the property. Again, this is zoning method property. Uh, the property as it stands today is zoned A1. The entire property is four hundred acres in size. And I believe last time I did make an error in how, how much lot? Forty acres, sorry. And then last time I presented, I also said there was eight hundred and twelve feet of lot frontage as exists, as it exists today. But that was a mistake. There's actually six hundred and eleven feet of lot frontage. And to the northwest and south, the properties are zoned A1. And to the northeast, there are, are one-zone properties. Again, this is an air view of the subject property. The outlined in red is the property that's set to be divided. And the outlined in blue is a parcel that will remain. As mentioned before, the property is improved to single-family house and three large barns and per adjacent aerials. The majority of parcel continues to be farmed. The property owner intends to create two parcels to sell off one parcel. The parcel island in red again is twenty, twenty-seven acres in size with two hundred point eleven feet of lot frontage. The parcel created will be deficient in lot frontage for the A1 zoning district. The applicant is requesting the variance for lot frontage to allow the newly created parcel to be conforming A1 parcel. Here we have the plot survey again showing the property boundary as well as the existing house and the detached barns on the property. Again, if you looking at north at the subject property that is set to be divided, if you're looking at, at the northwestern portion of the property, if you're looking at the northeastern portion of the property, if you're looking south across the adjacent property across Arsenal Road, if you're looking east down Arsenal Road, if you're looking west down Arsenal Road, and quickly go on over section one of variance standard review criteria. Staff finds the property owner is not due to unique circumstances. The existing property has enough frontage to be divided equally to meet the A1 frontage requirements. It is property owner's desire to divide the property that results in the need for the variance. A personal desire cannot be considered a unique circumstance. Staff also finds this variance will not alter the essential character of the locality. As mentioned before, in the surrounding area, there are several A1 properties that are also deficient in the minimum lot frontage requirements for the A1 zoning district. And looking at, quickly at section two, staff finds a particular physical surroundings result in a particular hardship. The property does contain a pond that if the parcels were created, meeting the A1 zoning requirement of three hundred feet, the pond would be split in half and divided among the two properties. Staff also finds the variance will not impair an adequate supply of air or increase the danger of fire. Any new structures on the property will be required to obtain a building permit and are will also be required to meet the A1 zoning district setbacks. Staff is recommending denial of the variance. And as mentioned before, the only comments that I received from public, from a public agency was a comment from Wilton Township, basically saying that due to irregular shape of the parcel, they would be not in support of the request as well as concerns with the limited size of the leftover parcel in regards to how much land is left over for farming and livestock. Um, but with that said, I'm happy to answer any questions.
I have no questions, but you didn't mention that they, they had a letter from. Did you?
Yes, correct. So I got the letter from Wilton Township Planning Commission. So this case was heard, I believe, the same, their September twenty-ninth meeting. As mentioned before, they basically had concerns with how the property is being divided. They consider the shape of the newly created parcel kind of irregular, kind of similar to a flag lot. And as mentioned before, kind of concerns with how much land will be left over for the parcels left over and concerns with how much property they have left over for farming.
Okay. Do we have that? So, questions to be asked before?
If you want, I'm happy to answer them.
Well, the applicant, the applicant weren't here or the attorney, so. We were asking Jesus about the, um, whether it's actually a flag lot and not a flying lot and a true flag on a pole. But we have the, I've stated that we have the objection from the township. And if neighbors were here objecting, that weighed pretty heavily. But he did at that point say that you thought it was eight hundred feet instead of the six hundred and eleven, I think you now correctly. So we were like, there should be easy enough weight. You know, the way I was looking at them with eight hundred feet, even sharing the pond. And we hashed over some things about sharing ponds. And I asked legal staff about the, uh, this is the first time I really ever recall seeing in the, uh, staff report this, this proposal solely for the purpose of making more money. Okay, so now you know, I, I, I probably, it's, since you weren't here, it's good that I went over this again because I did say it, but Roger wasn't here then, so. Just trying to sort through it all. Start with a fresh mind on the whole thing then.
Okay. Are there any objectors or concerned citizens to this case here? Obviously not. Rooms empty. Uh, may I hear from the, uh, owners or legal representation?
We'll find out. They will be going back.
Seeing, seeing as I know the legal representation, how are you this evening, sir?
Sorry for being late. I apologize.
It's all right. That's, we're here.
All right, thank you very much. Timothy McGrath on behalf of my clients. Couple things we want to address.
Please give your name and.
Uh, Timothy McGrath, attorney, uh, for my clients. Please state your name.
Todd Kazlowski.
Cassie Van Tasso.
They are the owners of the forty-acre parcel that we're, uh, they're looking to divide. Uh, they live on one portion of the property, which would be the thirteen-acre parcel. And then they're looking to divide a separate parcel that has approximately twenty-seven acres. Uh, there was some talk about, uh, we did get a copy of the letter, uh, from Wilton Township Planning Commission. Uh, my clients knew nothing about that meeting. They, they weren't, if there was a meeting, they were not there. Okay, but anyway, I'm so right, yeah, I, so, but we're going to, uh, address that, uh, they believe that the property, uh, split diminishes the integrity of the original estate or parcel. Um, this is a large home currently on a forty-acre parcel, A1 property with three large pole buildings. They're stating that the split were to occur and make the property have far less potential for farming, livestock, or horses and crates in irregular shaped property. I mean, we obviously disagree with that. Nothing's going to change. The farmland is going to remain the same. If they go to sell it, uh, there'll be one house on the property in a pole building, possibly if people build a pole building. So the integrity of the property is not going to change. It's going to be A1. It has to comply with the A1 ordinance. Second, they said the split also shown, shown does create a flag lot, which we have, they say the county is frowned upon. It's two hundred point eleven feet of frontage. Uh, they clearly would call that a flag lot. If it was thirty feet, that would be different. But it's two hundred point eleven feet of frontage. Um, the fact that it's irregular, I don't know what, uh, I'm not, don't think that really has any reason. In fact, so what? So for these reasons, they're objecting, but these are our arguments that, you know, answering those arguments. Secondly, when we're talking about the plight of the owner, the reason they're doing this, asking for the variance, is that they want to keep the pond on their side of the property. And the reason that is they have an aerator, all electricity, they keep up the property, they keep up the pond. Uh, they may run into a situation, they don't want to be divided because there'll be issues with adjoining landowners, the adjoining landowner, what he or she may want to do as far as contributing or paying for the upkeep of the pond. Now, we could have done it in re, I'm sorry? Okay. So they, they, um, that was, that's the big, that's the bigger reason. Or they could have done it the other way, I suppose, and had the pond on the other side of the property. But again, all the lake, all the electric. But again, all the like, all the electric, everything is hooked up on their side of the, on their side of the property. So that, that's one thing. And it, bottom line is, it's not going to change the essential character of that neighborhood. All right? It's zoned A one, and I think what's most telling is in, in the staff report, I believe they stated there's at least five properties located within two thousand feet each of the subject property that are also deficient in lot frontage for A one and A one zoning district. So again, if you look at it, the parcel right now has six hundred feet of frontage. We're asking for, to be reduced, reduced to two hundred. It's basically, there's going to be, they already have their driveway, there's going to be one other driveway, and that's it. And they're gonna, and then the A one, the rest of the lot will be A one, twenty-seven acres, a lot of farmland on there, correct? As you can see, there'll be room for a house, they can build one home, or whoever buys it can build one home and comply with A one ordinance. Okay. Right now, they don't have anyone interested in buying the property, and they pay, may actually, somebody in their family may want to buy it as well. They haven't decided yet. But again, there's no objectors. Whether the, the area is going to remain the same, one lot's going to have thirteen acres, one's going to have twenty-seven acres. According to the staff report, it doesn't affect the water supply, the air, the public welfare, or, or be unduly injur, injurious to other property or improvements in the neighborhood. So we're asking that you approve the variance. Now I can take any questions.
I have no questions. Anyone have any questions?
So I would just ask about the twenty-seven thirteen division. Is pretty much then the entire thirteen-acre lot, all the land state, meaning yard?
Yes.
And the twenty-seven would just bump into all farm?
All farm.
Pretty much?
Yes.
A few trees or other things, but yeah. So it does actually clean up the lot?
Yes.
Rather than two uses of one lot, and yeah, each lot specific use.
Yeah.
And the one thing we did talk about when you weren't here was the possibility of splitting the pond, and I did throw out to the legal staff that, well, there is a workaround, if you went three hundred and eleven feet and three hundred foot, you could, if you ever sold that property, get a fifty or hundred-year lease to include the whole pond, so legally. And we also did discuss, and staff said, it's our, my understanding, they could have just went and listed this with a realtor and sold it with two hundred and eleven foot of frontage, and nothing the county or us or anybody could have done stuff. And the person could have bought it and farmed it for years. The only time they would have really been, in an aha moment, would have been if they went to the county to get a permit.
That is correct.
Who wants to do that?
So then there was my conundrum, do we want to punish somebody?
Yes, but she said we don't want to do that.
Well, what they say and what the next, but yeah, do we really want to punish somebody who's here trying to do the right thing?
No.
And yeah, so that was, just rehashing everything, so.
And, and you know, honestly, the cost of the pond is, there's, there's some maintenance costs to keep it up to code and things, and so splitting that is really where the hardship comes in, is to trying to have that with multiple owners, who see that to be a really complicated effort.
The electric does run to our home. Like the electric is, is connected to our home.
We have, we have PUDs in this county where they have retention and detention ponds with multiple owners. Everybody has a slice onto the pond. They have a heck of a time paying the HOA on who's going to maintain the pond, and people argue all the time. You're much better off maintaining control of your own property.
So then, did I understand you say if it's time to die, looking to sell the farmland parcel?
It's not listed. We're not sure. The reason it even came up originally is his mom thought about.
Our parents are aging, and you know, it's just a consideration of if, is there a potential to build?
If they want to stay and we want to leave, do we want to have, I don't know.
Get him a house.
Yeah.
Get him a house.
If my mom's coming, we're leaving. Just kidding.
Uh-oh.
It means something.
Okay, so, did you want to address what the staff report said that it's solely for the purpose of?
Well, yeah, that's, I think we've said that, that it, at this point, you know, it may be, they're even considering a family member, so it's not, it's not really, at this point, solely for.
Where they say that, because obviously if you're, you're going to sell it because you don't want to maintain, twenty-four acres is going to make them, what, two hundred and some dollars an acre rented here, but if they sell it, they're going to make definitely way more money than they would renting it.
Sure.
Well, we wanted to be farmers.
Well, technically, it's farmland, so you're not maintaining, the farmer that's farming it, but you know, it's, it's the thing, to me, it's the same reason why people are putting solar facilities on their farmland. You can farm and work hard all year to make sixty dollars an acre, in their case, they might make a hundred and twenty, or they can sell it.
Right.
No, lease it and still have it for their family after forty years.
Maybe they'll be putting a solar facility on it.
No, I know, no solar facility.
May I address one thing, though? The only dissenting comment from Wilton Township that I read was that it was going to devalue the land, and so in, in the county's own assessment of that, they showed no devaluation of the land. So the only argument from Wilton Township was that this was going to divide the land. That was the only thing.
If I may, it just wasn't from Wilton Township. It was from Wilton Township Planning Commission Chairman.
Correct.
Yeah.
Mr. Borelli, Phil Borelli.
There's a, there's a big difference.
Okay, sure. So one, yeah. And, and the owner reported from the county, it says there's no devaluation of, of the property. So that was the big thing for me, was I didn't understand Wilton's, and not to have an opportunity to present at Wilton Township made it even a little bit more.
Yeah, I didn't know.
It's a little disturbing that you didn't know anything about this and get to present your case to them. It does infer that the supervisor made this report after it was heard by the Township's Planning Commission.
I spoke to the Planning Commission, some of the members, and I was.
Look who made the report, though.
Never occurred.
Look who made the report. It's signed, the report is signed.
Yeah.
So that's the supervisor. Well, if, if your present, finish with your presentation, we'll go ahead and.
Sure, thank you.
Take a vote.
All right.
Okay, ZC dash twenty-five dash zero nine five. Well, I ask for a motion.
For case ZC dash twenty-five dash zero nine five, B dash twenty-five. I made the motion.
I have a motion in a second, may I have a roll call, please?
Roger Bentonhausen?
Yes.
Louis Navarette?
Yeah.
Karen Warwick? Kimberly Mitchell? John Keefner?
Yes.
Chairman Hughes Tippin?
Yes.
Passes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Have a good evening.
Thank you. You too.
We have nothing in executive session. Do we have any announcements from the county? No announcements at our next meeting scheduled for October twenty-first. Now I'll take a motion of adjournment.
No move.
I have a motion, do I have a second? All the favors signified by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Same sign, okay, we're adjourned.